Every single morning, there will be a required morning meeting, starting off our day on a positive note, building relations, relationships, community within our classrooms. So that is going to be happening Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And the rest of Wednesday is going to be small group possibly, where teachers would have some small group instruction through Google Meet or Zoom. They will be meeting possibly even one-on-one to help assist students. They will also be reaching out to families to answer questions and to help assist in anything that's coming up. At each of our four sites, we will also be having our weekly professional development meeting at the end of the day.
Okay. Um, I can go through this kind of sample elementary during schedule that was shared with the school board. Like Clarence just said, we do start every day with morning meeting in each of our classrooms at elementary. This is a great time to build community with our students. And during that time, we'll be taking attendance. We'll be talking with our students, greeting one another, playing, playing games, building community and making sure that all the students are aware of kind of what's going on through the day. At eight fifteen would be approximately would be our first whole group lesson. And you saw this idea of this transdisciplinary lesson. That is if, uh, I'm going to call it fancy. It's a fancy IB term for lessons that incorporate all the different disciplines together and all the different standards together under one big idea that's worth exploring and understanding. And so we would do maybe like a fifteen to twenty minute lesson. And then we would break off into small groups and independent work. I know that it says forty-five minutes from eight fifteen to nine o'clock. Um, please don't expect that your child is going to be in front of the computer from seven forty-five until eleven forty-five straight. Um, there will be moments in which a teacher is doing like a fifteen minute lesson. And then they will say, you know, I need a group to come with me and do work and a group to work independently and maybe a small group work on this, um, on this link together. And so not everybody will be in front of the computer for seven forty-five to eleven forty-five, just because that's not realistic, especially for our youngest of learners. Um, another thing that will be significant is that eleven fifteen closing circle, just so that everybody knows what is coming at the end of the day um, and what to expect for the afternoon and the next days. Um, this is just another sample schedule. Um, your teachers that you are assigned to will be giving you a more specific schedule. So your students know when to log in. But this is just another one where the whole group lesson would be taught at eight fifteen, another one at nine fifteen and another one at ten fifteen, just so that you know, and just so you know when you needed to log in.
So Olivia?
Yep.
Yeah, something. I really want to, um, and Shelley and Olivia, if you disagree, please let me know. But I want to stress with families that are on this meeting that the first few days, just like if we were in person, uh, there's a phrase called to, we need to go slow to go fast. And what I specifically mean by that is typically classroom teachers, grade level teachers are building communities, relationships, doing a lot of activities of get, getting to know each other. Um, also as we have been working very hard in our district, especially under Superintendent Osiz's leadership, we are try striving to be anti-racist leaders. So there are definitely discussions at different grade levels that we will be having to give students an opportunity to hear, to listen, to share. So please know as we share these sample schedules, I don't want anyone to think right away on Thursday, September tenth, that we're going right into math reading. There will be a few days that teachers will be really trying their best, especially virtually, as we all know, getting to know your sons, daughters, granddaughters, grandsons, um, the best that they can and making them feel as special as we possibly can.
Yes.
Thank you.
So that's part of the reason, and I think that Shelley mentioned that earlier, is why we did the homeroom model is that no matter what, um, what way you chose to do your learning, if you chose to do distance learning all the time, or if we are going from hybrid to distance to full in person, no matter what, you're going to still have that homeroom teacher. And that is the reason is because we value relationships so much. We know that relationships are the key to academic success and for the teacher to truly know, uh, our students as learners, as individuals and as human beings, know them and, um, have that strong positive relationship with them. Are you guys good if I go to the next one?
That's fine.
Okay.
Well, you know, Olivia, I'm sorry, I'm going to actually ask you to go back to two, two slides because I think that what you were just talking, get this one. I think this one is what's really helpful for families to understand that, that school model that we're using. And then I know we're going to be close to the end of the, what we wanted to present. We really wanted to open this up for question and answer. But I do want families just to have an idea. If you look at that Monday slide there and you see that you have an orange group that is in session, that classroom teacher has two groups that are still in distance learning. So the B cohort group that is coming to Thursdays and Fridays is in distance learning as well as that C cohort group, which is doing distance learning, um, five days a week. But all of the students belong to that single individual teacher. And the beauty of this project or the, this plan and the platform is really that if for any reason a, a person needed to either go and move into distance learning, they don't have to, to move to a different teacher. Or I'm going to say likewise, if you're in a distance learning format and you're ready to come into a hybrid, uh, maybe that's going to happen for you later into the school year. There's going to be that availability and you're going to go right into the classroom teacher that you've already been working with. So that was really the, I'm going to say with the thought behind the elementary principals, the administrative team, putting this kind of a model together. And now you can go to that last slide.
Sure.
So this is really developing news. So please, I just really just want families to know like this just literally came out within the last week, things are changing all the time. Um, we were, we were given permission to begin offering free meals again to all students and that is going to be starting next Wednesday, September ninth. There will be a pickup at all six of our schools. And I'm going to encourage you to pay attention to our websites because that's where you're going to get that information on what time that's going to be offered and the logistics of how you might pick that up. But it is going to be offered and we're really grateful to have that opportunity to be able to provide that again for your, um, families. And please, if you know other people that are not with us tonight, I hope that you'll pass that word on. And it just, it helps me remember, I tell my families this, I tell our staff this. Pay attention to our website. It is our main mode of giving you the most up-to-date information. The other thing I want to point out is that we are offering free childcare for children of COVID nineteen tier one critical workers. And so if, if you happen to fall into that tier one critical worker umbrella, um, I would encourage you to make a call because you, you would be able to have free childcare during the day, which would mean that your child would theoretically be coming to school five days a week. They'd be in childcare on the days that they, if you choose to do that, the days that they're not actually attending school once we get to hybrid. And then I'm really excited to say that we have an after-school program and there are many families or parents that worked with us on an out-of-school program. And then obviously with COVID coming, it didn't end up coming to the fruition like we wanted it to. But I'm so thankful to see that we have some classes already going to start this fall and they're going to start virtually. So pay attention to the website. Again, that's where all this information is going to, is going to happen. And it is coming, that will start in just, not next week, but the week after, on the fourteenth.
And I can't say that enough. I just want to stress that to all of our families. Our website is where things are going to be kept up to date and it can be translated. So if you go to that top left button, um, top left translate button of our school website and hit translate, it can be translated into so many languages. And that, I know that that will be helpful for many of our families.
Sarah, I'm not sure who's keeping up with all the questions in the chat, but I wanted to, um, take an opportunity now to answer one of them regarding, um, someone asked about, um, who will be supporting my child if they're part of the, um, emergency childcare at Kids Place for their distance learning? And we, um, each of our schools, each of our four schools, but, uh, Quilla and Susan Langren on this meeting, uh, we have, we will be providing paraeducators that will be supporting and helping and assisting kids at, um, Kids Place childcare or emergency childcare at our sites. Again, I want to stress that's at each of our sites. So for Susan Langren families that may be part of this group, uh, there will be three, uh, excuse me, paraeducators that will be assisting the distance learning, uh, virtual learning. And the same at Aquila.
Thank you, Mr. Pollack, and thank you to, to all the principals tonight for giving us just a quick overview. We're now going to, going to turn it over to some questions and answers. Um, so come in, um, in the chat while our principals were presenting. And so I'm going to go ahead and throw them out there. Uh, if other people have questions, um, please put them in the chat. And, um, we will, we'll kind of tee them up one by one. Um, and then we'll also, um, do our best to, to get to everybody, um, here as we move through the night. So, um, I saw another question come in. Um, what exactly are the schools looking at, um, for the Wednesday plans? What do you have planned for Wednesdays in the distance learning schedule?
So I, I can answer that question on regarding Wednesday. Um, Wednesdays is set aside for teachers to provide some time and more small group instruction as well as one-to-one help. Um, so if a teacher is noticing that a student is, um, maybe struggling in an area and needs some additional assistance, that they could reach out one-on-one and help them get caught up. Or if they're seeing that, you know, maybe the work is a little bit too easy or, you know, like think they're just flying through their work, then they would have a little bit of time to do some coaching and give some, some enrichment activities. They would be able to have those small group and one-on-one. It's also a time in which, uh, students can start to do some of their asynchronous specialist classes. Um, because I, all of our specialists will be posting some asynchronous lessons and that is a time that, um, our students can access those. We know and believe that it's really important for our students to be like well-rounded and also have just a little bit of time away from, from screens and that sort of thing. So just those extra times to do some of those enrichment asynchronous activities is going to be, um, and just some one-on-one tutoring time is what it's for. Or like counseling, um, social work lessons, friendship groups, things like that.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, can you talk a little bit about, um, what we're looking at this year in terms of online support by parents? What, how much, how much support is going to be needed for parents to support learning at home?
I'll, I'll start with this one. I, I, first I'm going to say that I think that the experience that you had in, in the spring is going to be vastly different than the experience your child's going to feel this fall. So I'm going to start there. The learning curve was straight up for all of us, um, moving from teaching in a school setting to being remote. And one of the things that we learned was that the asynchronous format, that's where you're actually watching something that has already been pre-recorded. And then you're trying to interpret that for your child. And really what it was is parents became teachers. And I don't think any of us would deny that we saw that that was happening. But that is not what you're going to experience at, at this point. There's going to be a synchronous experience for those of you that can log on in, in the morning or your child logs on in the morning. So that live experience allows questions and that dialogue to happen. And that was missing in the spring for them to be able to ask questions as a lesson is actually unfolding, regardless if you're in the classroom or if you were at home. The other thing I would say is it's really hard, it was hard for us even coaching parents to let you understand that there's going to be productive struggle. That's a word that those of us in education know about. It means that we can't allow children to only be tackling things that they can easily master. We would not be stretching and growing our kids. We wouldn't have those rigorous high standards if we didn't have kids have some productive struggle in their lesson. But what we heard over and over from our parents, and I, I heard it in the surveys that when I had parents called, is they said, it's hard because my child doesn't know the answer. And I feel like then I have to sit next to them. And I'm going to say to you, I don't, we don't need you to sit next to them. Actually, it's okay to be in that little bit of productive struggle. And we want them to sit in that for a little bit because that's what gets that brain going. And then finally they ask a question or they hear a classmate say something and you begin to see that link happening. So I'm going to encourage you, number one, not to expect that it is your position as a parent or as a grandparent or a caring adult in that class to be educating your child. That is what we want to take on. And that's one of the reasons why you're going to see so much more synchronous experiences. And we've had more limited asynchronous experiences.
Thank you, Principal Nielsen.
Sarah, I see.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say, I see there's a lot of questions regarding the need of technology, like Chromebook or hotspot or something like that. I'm going to put the link to the Google form inside the chat where parents can sign up saying, I need a Chromebook or an iPad, a hotspot, that sort of thing. So I'm going to do that in the chat right now.
Thank you, Olivia.
Thank you, Olivia. I was just going to ask for one of you to do that.
Yeah. And for those of you that are filling that form out, please know that next week when you come, uh, the whole goal of having the Google form that, that Olivia is going to be giving you is that we want to be able to provide you with devices next week when you do the meet your teacher. So filling that out helps us get best prepared for when you're coming in person next Tuesday and Wednesday or for kindergarten, any day next week. Thank you.
And we will have the Chromebooks ready for those families that need them that might have asked in this chat at both of our sites. Also, uh, we will have devices for kindergarten as well. Um, I want to be careful with this, but I do want to share that we are trying to do our very best, um, to use our resources of iPads for kindergarten students. We're going to start at kindergarten and we believe that we will have, um, very close to enough for every single kindergarten student at our four sites. We also feel strongly that, uh, iPads are a little easier device to work with as you are a kindergarten student. I know that our technology director has also ordered six hundred more iPads using some of our COVID nineteen funds. So we will be, uh, gradually moving that out, um, as we receive them. They're kind of on a back order, not kind of, they're on a back order right now. But, uh, as we receive them, we will be, um, our hope is to get them to first grade hands as well.
Perfect. Thank you. See a couple of questions, um, regarding, is there, is there a good way to help distance learners, students feel more connected, um, during distance learning? Um, or is there a way to connect students, um, during this distance learning time when they're not able to see, um, other students and able to, um, have that social connection that they would otherwise have if they were in classrooms and in schools?
I'll ta, I'll take a try at this right now. I will go back to the morning meeting and the closing meeting, realizing that yes, they will be virtual, but that is the time that our amazing outstanding teachers and staff will be building activities to, um, include people. I would also encourage any one of you on this meeting that we also have social workers and our social emotional learning, um, at all of our sites are number one, meaning we value that. We know that that is an import, that is just as important as our academic learning. So we have resources for you and for your children that may need small group, um, which would be virtual in the afternoon, maybe by, uh, a counselor or a social worker or a person, um, at our sites. Anyone want to add to that?
Well, I, I, I'm going to go back to the synchronous learning experience. I, I don't want to discount the fact that when we can get kids back in a classroom type environment, even if it's distance, but we're all live, there's going to be some social emotional support that we can just give to a class, be it in-person or virtually. And we talked a little bit about those morning meeting and that closing circle and the value of being able to bring kids together and literally talk about where we're at, how we're feeling, what experiences that we're having. And to be able to hear each other is so important to their learning and to be able to be reconnected with each other. I think the morning experience for our kids will be vastly different than what children experienced in the spring. And then I think what, what Clarence just mentioned, just about having the additional support structures in place with our social workers um, and our counselors is just another added feature that we can add not only to our classrooms, but also can add, um, on Wednesdays and at other times if they're going to meet in groups.
Another question, um, I have some parents wondering what distance learning will look like, um, in a kindergarten classroom?
Yeah. Do you want me to start with that one?
Uh, I will, I will take any, any and all comments.
Okay, I'll start. And I, I, I'm going to, so you're going to, the same format that you actually heard, I'm going to say Olivia was actually talking probably a lot more to what it would look like for a K one student, first their stamina at, at being able to attain to a task is going to be much more limited. So keep in mind that after a morning meeting, when a teacher is going to do a large group instruction, that large group instruction is going to be five, maybe 10 minutes long. And then kids need to be able to move into another activity. And that activity could be a small group activity. I was watching today our kindergarten team putting together all of the, the information that they want to have home for the kids and it was color-coded and it had all sorts of different things. There's a journal that they're going to be writing on. So each day is going to be a different page that they're going to be asked to reflect on. When they are writing in that journal, they don't necessarily need to be live time on, on the screen. So as you heard Olivia talking, there's going to be time when the teacher is teaching something, she's demonstrating or he's demonstrating something. And then going to be able to say, you know what, we are going to, I'm going to let you pull out your journal. You're going to notice that there was a tracing part right here and I'm going to ask you to try to do what you just saw me doing. We're going, we're going to actually spend fifteen, twenty minutes. We're going to pull away from our computer before we come back into a large group. If you were, if a parent was there and opted to have a child log out, they could. But that child could literally just have that computer pushed back from them and have their workspace and work right there. And that teacher, just like in the classroom, will bring the kids back. They'll use a little chime, they'll use a little sound, they'll play a little song. And, and then the kids will come back in together for a large group. Olivia, did you want to add anything from what you were saying? Hope you're on mute.
I know. Um, how many times have we heard that over the last month? Oh, you're on mute. Dear goodness. You know, I, I don't think that I would add so much, but I just know that, um, in kindergarten, you can expect a lot of moving from whole group to small group, back to whole group, back to small group. And they'll continue to build their stamina as the weeks and months go on. Um, and I would say probably even more, so, so in the very beginning, you'll see probably a lot more just kind of whole group of games and songs and, um, and then when you think about like the real academic pieces will probably more be taught in small group. Um, and I've been trying to keep up with some of the things in the chat and I, I got to tell you, I'm not typing fast enough, so I'm sorry, everybody. Um, someone had asked regarding, kind of talk about the afternoons just a little bit more, please. So our elementary students will be coming home or going to Kids Place, uh, or emergency childcare. Um, they will be either taking the bus or something like that at eleven forty-five. That would, and then we would not get back to school time until, I believe it's, I guess I should.
Twelve forty-five.
Forty-five, right? Um, from that twelve forty-five time, that could be a synchronous lesson from a specialist teacher. Um, it could be a small group lesson from their homeroom teacher. It could be just some time in which they are supposed to be doing some independent work until one fifteen and then maybe one fifteen is their, um, synchronous lesson for music. So the each child's, each student's afternoon is going to look a little different depending on their grade level and depending on which school they attend. Um, so we, just like it does at school, it just has to vary a little bit more so that we can get those specialist teachers in, get band, get orchestra, um, get all those different things that we also value, um, in, in the afternoon. But it's just going to, the schedule is going to look different for each child.
Thank you, Olivia. So I'm, I have a, I have a, I have a really big kind of thirty thousand foot level question that I'd like to throw out. Um, and I, I think it's probably something that, um, everybody's wondering. Um, and that's, do you have a transition plan, um, to, to kind of look ahead to the future and think about this school year as a whole? Knowing that the governor, Department of Education, um, gave us marching orders that we are to have three plans, the, the in-person learning plan, the hybrid learning plan and the distance learning plan. And, and do we have a transition plan? And what does that look like to be able to move between the three learning models? Um, and what is, what does that look like? And, and how, how do we see that going, knowing that we've, we've already, you know, we have plans in motion, um, and it's on the calendar already? Does anybody, can anybody talk to that and, and tell our, tell our parents kind of what, what that looks like, what that will feel like?
Sure. Um, we will be looking at, um, Hennepin County numbers. First of all, uh, what I specifically mean is the COVID, um, testing numbers for Hennepin County. We also have been shared, uh, numbers for each city within Hennepin County. So we will be looking at that. Those numbers come out, correct me if I'm wrong, every two weeks. So we will, we have a date that we would, um, be looking at that as well as having enough staff. I want to stress that some of our sites, we are still working on having full staff. Um, because there are a number, as I think everyone knows on this call, there's a number of people in our families, our neighborhoods, our, maybe our teams at work that have health-related, uh, risk, um, especially with COVID. And we need to keep them safe and protect them and honor their needs. So we are also working on that. So there's a couple of different things. First of all, the numbers. And we have a date that we would be saying, we're looking at the numbers. Do we have enough staff? Can we do this? And, um, you know, moving into full in-person instruction, um, to be quite honest with you is, uh, in one way of thinking is probably the easiest, meaning, let me clarify what I mean by easiest. There are not as many specific parameters that the principals and teachers need to, uh, make sure are occurring. Obviously, we're going to keep your children safe. We're going to do everything to do that, um, and to not increase our COVID numbers. But, um, that's kind of the biggest direction. So we have, uh, we have some dates that we will be looking at to see, okay, uh, you know, we, we have publicized the twenty-eighth as our start of our hybrid for early learning through second grade and our hybrid start for grades three through twelve on October fifth. But that could change. Um, and, you know, I was kind of trying to talk positive. We could have an increase in numbers too. Um, so I want to be real and transparent that we may be coming to our community saying, we can't quite pull it off because the numbers are at a certain number according to the guidelines and we want to keep everyone safe. Shelley, Olivia? Okay.
I think you covered it. And I think that we actually heard Superintendent Osai mentioned this at a school board that I, I would love to say that this year is going to be a flow in the, in the direction of going from distance learning into hybrid, which we hope will happen at the end of September and the first of October. And then from there, we start moving our way into full, into full in-person. And honestly, I don't think that there is a principal or probably an adult here that wouldn't want that to happen if it was a safe situation. And so I want you to know that we would love to see everybody back full-time. I'm just going to tell you that, that is what would be our dream. But we also want to know that, we want you to know that safety is going to be the very first, the very and highest concern that we are going to have. And we're going to make sure that we can do it safely before that happens. And the school board will have a say in that.
Um, I, um, I saw that there are a few questions about assessment, uh, when, or testing when, in the chat. So I just thought I'd address that. Um, our testing isn't going to look exactly the same as it has in the past. Uh, at this time, again, the only thing that we know about COVID is that everything changes all the time, right? And so I'm going to let you know. And so I'm going to let you know what I know at this point in time. Regarding testing, many of you are familiar with an assessment called FAST or the Early Reading Assessment, if you've been in our, in our buildings for a while. That assessment, we currently are not going to be doing. But what we do know is that the measures of academic progress or MAP testing that occurs in grades two through five can be done remotely. And so that is something that is on the table for something that we could do because we know that that does help us plan some instruction and knowing how to better serve our students. So that is something that we are thinking about and is on the calendar for the future, for this year. I cannot tell you exactly because regarding MCAs at this point in time as to what those would look like if we were going to do those. But I would count on just knowing that our teachers, the way that we do assessments is going to look different. We'll be doing a lot more formative assessments, I'm sure. And the fact that the teachers will be constantly doing different types, types of assessments just to better understand what the students are doing in their daily work and giving feedback on that so that we can use that to improve our instruction. So just know that there'll be kind of more formative assessments given by the teacher, and then probably less of those standardized assessments across the board. Hopefully that answered your question.
Can anyone, or not, because you all can, sorry, I should choose my phrasing on my questions. Who would like to tell me a little bit about what it will look like for, for students who are in distance learning? And still want to participate in after-school classes? Does anybody have, have any insight on that?
So first of all, after-school classes are open to anyone and everyone. So I want to stress whether you're full distance or hybrid, once we start the hybrid, it is open to every single student. That being said, we are getting more information from our colleagues at Community Ed, and that will be shared with you guys, again, like my colleague said, on our district website as well as our school websites of how to connect, how to sign up. So we have been working, some of you might have heard and been part of it, the Outer School Task Force that we, all of us were part of. Principals, in regards to what can we do for that time from 2:15 on to help students stay engaged and help families as well. So we have come up with some activities and clubs that I'm really excited about. You know, being in, living in a pandemic right now, we have to follow some guidelines, safety guidelines. So right now, they are going to be virtual that I'm aware of, that right now, we will be getting information out to you as quickly as possible. So again, check those school websites.
Sarah, I know you have other questions, but can I address the, this is one I think is pretty unique, and we have a large group of people that are in full distance learning that are, that have opted into that. And I, first, I'm going to say, Olivia, could you find the link? There was a parent that asked how they could get into full distance. Could you put the link in the chat?
Yeah.
So for, yes.
I just tried to do a summary of it, so I'm guessing you're going to address that, so you can ignore my, my summary on the side, and I will, I will get the link.
I just think that we have to remember that we have, our, all of our kids are going to be doing distance learning. So it isn't an isolated group, because even for the group that are doing distance learning five days a week, keep in mind that when we go to hybrid, the kids that are in hybrid are still distance learning three days a week. So everybody needs to learn how to be doing distance learning, what that's going to look like. But I'm going to speak specifically for the kids that are going to do five consecutive days. Their morning is going to look like everybody else. They will be at home, logged into the computer. So when they go online, they are going to see their class, and part of their class is going to be on the screen. It'll be the group of kids that are home, and they're going to see the group of kids that are at the school at that time and their teacher that is there. And that lesson will be filmed. I heard someone ask before, like, what happens if, you know, are they live or can you also see them later? Yes, you could see them later. So if for any reason you couldn't see, your child couldn't log in that morning and watch that lesson, they can go ahead and log into it later because we're going to record every live lesson that we do and put that then onto the, onto the website or on the, the Seesaw. They, we're all going through Seesaw, which is going to be our platform. So that teacher will post that on Seesaw for that day, and I'm sure it will be up for a couple of days before it will go down. But if you're home, you'll do the morning just like anybody that would be in school. And then in the afternoon, everybody's at home. And depending upon your grade, you'll have a specific set of things that you'll need to accomplish in the afternoon, knowing that a child's day still ends at 2:15. So there'll be asynchronous lessons, lessons that you will go online and you can watch, like a Fayad lesson, a Spanish lesson, a music lesson. There'll also be, there'll be live lessons in the afternoon that you can, that you will know the schedule, and you'll say, oh, well, there's a live music lesson right now for first grade, so you can watch that. It is also going to be a time when we pull kids into small groups. So teachers will be creating small groups where they work, and that won't, that, all of our kids will be online at that point. So they'll be working with just a small group, but they'll be online with them. So I just want to be realistic to everyone to know that it's, that experience of even being in a distance learning is still going to be live. I'm going to say live and in that school experience in the morning where everybody can have that experience. Sarah, did you pull another question that you wanted us to address?
I did, and also responding to one at the same time. Let me go back and pull another question. Principals, could you talk a little bit about special services? And when I say, actually, instead of special services, I should say student services. Can you talk a little bit about special education and, and students on IEPs, Individualized Educational Programs? And could you also, I'm doing an "and" now, which is dangerous, could you also talk a little bit about health services and students who have health concerns and I'll stop there. I won't, I won't layer too many things on where, where we are past 7:30.
So I can, I'll go with that one. So for any student that, and I know I, I've seen a few questions that are on an IEP, each individual education plan is unique to that child and their goals. But depending on their level of service, their case manager will be reaching out to you if they have not already done so. And depending on their level, there could be, for example, a Level 2 student that receives special education services will be, and they're signed up for hybrid, for example. They would go, for example, on a Monday, Tuesday, and they would be offered an additional day to meet their goals and things on their IEP. I just was at a particular IEP meeting, family meeting today, and that was being offered and will be offered. Again, depending on the level of your child's services per their IEP. Regarding, I know there's been some questions regarding COVID and health. So I think this is what you're looking for, Sarah. Our health offices, we are also going to have an additional room or location for students that may be showing or having symptoms, COVID-like symptoms, I want to be careful with that, but where they are not just sitting in the health office with students that might need to take medication for a variety of reasons, or they have a cut or bruise or something and they need a Band-Aid. Teachers will have those supplies in the classrooms, but they still sometimes come down to the health office. And we want to try our best to separate those groups of students. So we will have a separate room that will be monitored by an adult in our buildings, working collectively with the nursing staff as well as the health aides, and following all the guidelines that CDC and Minnesota Department of Health have required us to follow. So we will be following that at each of our four sites. Anything you want to add, colleagues? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. So we are, we are now past our time. As, as educational, educational leaders, the principals and myself are happy to stay and answer more questions. But I do want to honor your time as well as apologize for our late start and our technical difficulties. And so we are happy to stay and keep answering your questions, but also want to honor that we did say our meeting would go till 7:30. So if there are people who, who need to continue on with your evening, we want to honor your family time and by all means say an enormous thank you for, for joining us tonight. And, and say we wish you your very best start to the school year. And, and really, really hope that there's a lot of love in your home and love in your hearts as we all begin. We are so looking forward to educating your students. Our teachers are back. They're excited. They, they miss the students and they are so energized and excited to get the year underway. We've got principals at the ready to answer more questions. There's nothing worse than leaving a meeting and saying, oh, I wish I had asked this one more thing. All of the principals here tonight, as well as the principals who did have to hop off to other meetings are completely available to you. I know that School Board Member Waters is on the, on the, on the meeting tonight as well. Our school board members are absolutely also available and willing to take your call as are any of the administrative cabinet members in the school district. So I wanted to just put that out there as well as just invite you to stay if you still have more questions that you would like to ask. We're, we're, we're not going anywhere. We've got, we've got some time to stay here, but I did want to, I did want to just put that out there in case anybody was looking for kind of a hard close on the meeting to be able to have permission to leave and go spend time either on yourself or with your family tonight. So thank you very much. And with that, I am going to hop back into a couple more questions. So one came in that said, what is the transdisciplinary curriculum that we've been talking about, and that's tied to IB? Olivia's our master, comes to the international back-
I'm not, I'm not a master, but I can, I can give, I can give an example. So I think one of the best ways to give examples is just to get something that's like personal and local and immediate in our world right now. So if we're thinking about transdisciplinary learning, one of the things that we thought about was even at the start of everything right now, we're trying to figure out what's the best way to start the school year during amongst all this COVID everything, right? Well, if they're in a transdisciplinary lesson, that would be a big question that we would ask. We would ask our students, but right now, I'm talking to you guys as adults. But we would need to know about what is the science behind the COVID and about how it is spread and learn more about that. We'll have to talk about math. We have to think about what's the financial impact of starting school full, fully? What, do we have the funds? What kind of funding do we need for, for Chromebooks? Funding for transportation, funding for everything. So we have to use our math. We also have to think about being able to use our reading and literacy skills, be able to read all those charts and diagrams, being able to use our media skills and join up with Google Meet to be able to figure it out. We have to be able to really think about our social and emotional and looking at a lens for that, like think about the social, emotional health of our students. We have to think about so, social studies and think about what's the global pandemic and what's the, how, what's the impact globally on this. So we have to look at it as a huge lens through all these different disciplines in order to get to what we believe is the best answer. And so when we do a transdisciplinary lesson, we start with a question with our students. And then we use all the different disciplines to be able to help find what we believe is the best answer. Many of the times that we do that, more questions come up, and we use those questions to guide our learning. And so we, the bigger questions that we ask are based on our standard. But we tie that, all the standards kind of together so that we know kind of what standards we need to hit in all the different disciplines to, under this big umbrella question. I'm hoping that kind of gives you a general idea of what transdisciplinary learning is like and what it would be like for you as an adult, but then we just kind of scale it down just a little bit for our students, but not too much.
Awesome. Thank you, Olivia. One more question, and this one's a little specific. Do we need to bring school supplies in next week?
So I'm going to start with that. Parents, family members, please know that with things that have been ebbing and flowing, I know that on our websites, we have our school supply list. So do the very best you can, but please know, please do not stress, please do not fret about that. We will have supplies for your students if that is not something you've had an opportunity or can do right now. So please, we will have supplies for them. Susan Lindgren's PTO specifically is also asking for, we will be asking for donations to help out in the classrooms and stuff. So families, if you can, yes, bring them, either on the 8th or 9th, but please, that should be one of your last worries, and I really mean that.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. I saw one question about the Return to School Guide and can we make the updates more visible? We're working on a, a better way to do that. We, we did list the updates this last time. I'm, I'm, I'm with you. I'm not sure that's the best way to do it. So I, I hear you on that. We're working on it to see if there's a better way to do it. So just know that that's a, that's a work in progress, and that's a document that's going to live on all year round. So the Return to School Guide looks like this. Everybody should have a copy of it. It's also on the district website. We'll be using it all year to really help us guide our way through the three different learning plans. And it'll be our resource to help us understand not only the educational models, but health and safety and everything else as we work through the global pandemic. So you'll see regular updates on that, and we'll do our best to highlight for you the changes as we get new guidance from the Department of Education and the Department of Health. I can tell you that it, it's, it's fast and heavy. We get updates daily and sometimes more than once a day, to be honest with you. So we're doing our best to share that with you as, as swiftly as we can and with as much information that we can provide you with what, how it affects learning for your students and your families locally. So with that, it looks like-
Sorry.
Yeah, you go ahead.
I just wanted to, for those of you that know me, I just want to take a moment to thank each and every one of you. This is a partnership. No matter what school you are attending, this is a partnership. We need you. You, we need each other, and we're, we're going to do good things this year. It's unique like no other year, but please know we are here for you, and it's going to be a great year. Thank you.
Wonderful. So I will give, I will give Shelley and Olivia a chance to close, and then I think we're going to wrap up for the night and give everybody a chance to take a deep breath.
It's funny you said a deep breath. You know what? When teachers came back on Monday, we collectively as a staff took a big, deep breath. And so Clarence, thank you for always showing up as your true authentic self. I appreciate you. I love you, and I, I just- I appreciate you. I love you and I, I just really thank you for that. Um, and I hope that one of the things that you are li- hearing loud and clear is the love that we feel for you and your family. Um, we are also a very collectively close principal group. And I'm going to tell you that doesn't happen. Um, this principal is the oldest principal of the elementaries. I'm not going to say by how many years.
But our students get it mixed up, Shelley, so you don't look that old.
I, uh, but I do want to say that I've had the, I've had the pleasure of working in other districts. It doesn't happen everywhere. So it is such a blessing to work in such a tight community that cares so deeply about each other and to all the families that have given out such shout-outs. You know, thank you, thank you, because we feel the love. We feel the love and support that we are getting. And I'm just going to echo something that Clarence started to say. I want to remind you that you are your child's first educator. The day they were born, you started educating them. And when your child came to school, you didn't leave them with us. We just joined you in the journey. And that doesn't change. Any format that we educate your child, we're on the journey with you. And what you do and what we do are both a form of education. We don't expect you to do the teaching, but we know that you'll always be the partner and we know that you're with us in that. So I thank you for that. And I, and this is going to be a great year. We got this.
Yeah. Um, as I guess, I don't know how to even follow that. Um, but all I'm going to say is that, um, I am thankful for the community. And I have received a lot, I, I, I feel the love from the community and that's is, um, what is keeping everything afloat, I think, right now and keeping, keeping the Energizer Bunny going is because, um, I love this community so much and I'm feeling the love from them. As a parent in this community, uh, I want to give my, and as an administrator, I want to give my one hundred percent to our community, to our students, to our schools, because they deserve the very best and you deserve the very best. Um, and so you know that I always end almost all of my letters with, in partnership. And I truly believe that, that this is a partnership. And we can't do it with, I can't do it without you. I'm just going to keep it personal. I can't do it without you. And you are keeping me fueled right now because right now I can't see the kids. And so I want to thank you for that. Thank you for everything that you're doing. Keep those questions coming because, um, that's how we know what we need to do and what we need to answer. So thank you.
Thanks for, thanks for just spending the time with us.
Yes. And for being patient and flexible.
Yeah. Having grace.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, everybody. It's been a great evening and much like our principals just said, thank you so much for, um, your patience and grace as we, we had a rough start tonight. Um, we, we too have a lot to learn, um, about a distance learning and everything else. So, um, we, we will take this and, um, come back better and stronger the next time out. So I hope everyone has a wonderful evening and, um, a great weekend. Um, and we will, uh, have a very strong start next week when we kick off the 2020-21 school year. Um, all of our students back in. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.